Good evening and welcome to tonight's council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First thing I'm going to ask for, is there any agenda changes?
Mr. Mayor, staff would ask that under new business item five be added, which is consideration of purchase for fire hydrants and supplies. And then under executive session, a second executive session be added for the purpose of non-elected personnel.
Okay, we've added those items. And first thing I'm going to ask for is approval on the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, there's no further discussion or commentary on the consent agenda. The motion is approved with agenda for July 27th.
August, it should be August 10th, Mike.
Oh, August 10th. Well, yeah, okay, August 10th. August 10th, 2020.
Jamie, will go to you for the review again tonight?
Motion by Councilmember Wallace to approve the consent agenda for August 10th, 2020, as presented, seconded by Councilmember Clausen.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Consent agenda passes. We will now move on to public forum. Is there anybody here that wishes to address the council this evening? Seeing no movement from the gallery, we're going to close the public forum. Next item is unfinished business, and we have done. So we're going to move to new business. And the first item is a public hearing on the proposed 2021 budget. So I'd like to open that public hearing at this time. If there's anybody here that would like to speak in regards to the city's 2021 budget. And again, seeing no movement from the gallery, we're going to close that public hearing. And we're going to move on to the next agenda item, which is consideration of special use case SU.
Mr. Mayor.
May I make a motion to approve the proposed 2021 budget for the city of Halsted and authorize governing body signatures on the document and submission to the county clerk.
Okay, you can review that, Jamie.
Motion by Councilmember Campbell to adopt the proposed 2021 budget for the city of Halsted and authorize the governing body's signatures on the document and submission to the county clerk, seconded by Councilmember Wallace.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. And that carries. Put the budget issues to rest for another year. And the next item is consideration of special use case SU 2020-01. Ethan, do you need to weigh in, or do you want me to just start on this?
You can just start there with what you have, and then I will jump in when it's my time.
Okay, I call agenda item number E2, which is on case SU 2020-01. This is an application for the establishment of a retail business as a special use in the I-2 heavy industrial district. I'm just going to read verbatim what this form says. "This qualification declared in form determined, before we proceed, I'll ask the council members if any of them intend to disqualify themselves from discussing and voting on this case because they have conflicts of interest or particular bias on this matter." The general councilman would like to recuse himself from this. Don't see any action from the council. So we now have a form of four present. As we're required to have three. So we're going to move on to the protest petitions. Has the city clerk received any protest petitions on the case?
I have not.
And Jamie has not. So here's the summary of the hearing. I now ask the council members if they all receive copies of the unapproved minutes of the planning commission for July 20th. Yes, yes. It summarizes the hearing on this case. Having determined that the members have received the required information, I'm going to ask the applicant members of the public present the first of two questions. Do those who are present on this, or is there anybody here that's present on this particular case? Don't believe so. Do I need to ask the question anyway, Ethan? As a matter of public record? So the question is, do you feel that you had a parent in person hearing? No answer, good. Should any questions arise to this matter, the council with the assistance of the city attorney needs to determine if such responses warrant returning the case to the planning commission for a continuation or rehearing de novo, i.e. from the beginning. After the zoning administrator report, I will be asking the second question to the applicant and the public who may wish to speak on this item. So is this a good time for you to deliver that, Ethan?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any new information on this case, not otherwise presented at the hearing, that should be brought to the attention of the council? Now I will call on our zoning administrator, Ethan Reimer, to provide us with a brief background and report on the case and recommendation of a planning commission.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. As the agenda memo reports, this is a special use application brought forward by HS Property LLC, which owns, currently leases that property to Moone Creek. Specifically, they were talking about the front acreage. It's a little over two acres, I believe. That would be at the corner of 36th and Halsted Road, or Sixth Street and Halsted Road. You know, you've probably seen the real estate sign part kind of in that approximate location for quite some time. You were given the actual application as part of the packet materials, and then the minutes. You can see the 17 findings of fact. This is not a formal amendment, like a rezoning would be, but it is a, you're allowing essentially a use that is normally not allowed, in that without getting permission first. So it does go to council for final decision. Planning and zoning commission did meet, had a public hearing as required, and their official recommendation was to deny the special use application. The city council can overturn that. We require a two-thirds majority vote. You may also return the recommendation to the planning commission, should you choose, if you feel there's not sufficient evidence in front of you to make a decision on this case, but you do need to specify to them why you do not believe a decision can be made with the information that has been provided to you. I did note, this is a special use case, and because it's zoning, even though you can see the persons or company that is requesting or would potentially move into the special use that was approved, that your decision should be made solely based on what the proposed use is and not who the user would be. So in this case, essentially, if you are denying a retail special use, then if any retail special use can't board from that exact same parcel, you should also deny that, not just because this happens to be a, you know, a certain applicant or anything like that. So just want to put that out there before you all make your decision, as your decision is final unless the applicant would appeal to district court. So other than that, I would gladly answer any questions, but hopefully you all read those 17 bindings of fact and what the planning commission and their reasoning behind leaving denial was the appropriate course of action. They stated safety concerns and non-conformance with the adopted comprehensive plan concerning land use and the readily amount of commercial space available elsewhere that is properly zoned for that. So.
Okay, we'll continue through the document. At this point, does the applicant wish to present any new information? We're not here. Are there any questions to the applicant from the council members? Let me skip back, because nobody's here to ask the questions, too. Final public comments. Does anyone from the public wish to respond to the applicant's information or provide any new information? I mean, no movement from the gallery here. So the council deliberation section. Assuming the council has received all the information they need on this case, I will outline the choices provided under the state statutes for council action, KSA 12-757C. Number one, by a majority vote, move to adopt the findings and factors and recommendation of the planning commission on this case and to approve any ordinance that's associated with it. If a valid protest petition is determined, four votes will be needed to approve the case. We don't have a valid protest petition before. So by a two-thirds majority vote, you can move to override the planning commission's recommendation, describe in detail the finding factors supporting the motion, attach appropriate conditions, if any, and approve ordinance designed for this. By a more majority vote, return the recommendation to the planning commission for further consideration at its next regular meeting with a statement specifying the basis for the council's failure to approve or disapprove the recommendation. Note, if the council returns the planning commission's recommendation to the planning commission, after considering the same, may resubmit its original recommendation, giving the reasons therefore, or submit a new and amended recommendation. Upon the receipt of such recommendation of council, by a simple majority thereof, may adopt, or may revise, or amend action their own. If the planning commission fails to deliver its recommendation to the council following the planning commission's next regular meeting, after receipt of the council's report, the council shall consider such course of inaction on the part of the planning commission as a re-submission of the original recommendation and proceed accordingly. In either circumstance, the council may take action they desire by a majority vote. So I'd like to call for a motion on case SU 2020-01.
Mr. Mayor, if there's no discussion, the first is I would make a motion to adopt the findings and factors and recommendations of the Halsted Planning Commission on special use case SU-2020-01 and deny the special use.
And we'll go to Jamie for the review.
Motion by Councilmember Torres to adopt the findings and factors and recommendation of the Halsted Planning Commission on special use case SU-2020-01 and deny the special use, seconded by Councilmember Wallace.
There is the motion in the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. That motion carries unanimously. The closing remarks on this is, this, we did vote to disapprove it. Persons agreed by the final decision of the council on this matter have 30 days after tonight's action within which to appeal to district court. We want to thank all of you for participating in this matter, and you are welcome to stay for the remainder of our meeting. I will now call for agenda item number E3, which is consideration of biz for wheel loader for Public Works. That coming from Pat's team.
Meeting, Mayor, council. We are here, I'm here to present the bid openings and the bid specs that we've completed. This is to replace the ailing case loader we had. Arizona would be expensive enough to really not warrant to put money into it. We did go out for biz and received six bids back. We had one that did not spend a bid, but we had about seven vendors. At this time, the Dusan has met all the specs that we were asking for. Just add that we approved for the purpose of that machine with $43,210.
When we talked before, we discussed that we were just estimating around 80 grand. Now that we're looking at almost double that. Is there any cost savings that we can do? I mean, am I misinterpreting what our last meeting was? Around 80 grand?
We were looking at 80 to 100,000, those kind of figures are what I had. I'm not sure. How to answer that exactly, because we basically expect out the machine that we're looking for. Probably some of that cost is just associated with not realizing how much equipment has increased in price. You know, the one, I guess we did expect this a slightly heavier machine than we originally had. We found over the year that this, it was due to a lot of what we wanted, but there was some data really just need to be just a little bit. But we did move up to one, basically, inside for this. That probably worth the rest of that cost.
You guys had several buckets. We were talking about interchangeability.
Correct.
That is still the case yet. This has two buckets, one of the multi-purpose, one of the just the multi-purpose.
Do you have a warranty on this piece of equipment?
What we got was seven years, $4,000.
How many hours did we have on the?
Probably $4,100.
And for some of the citizens out there, not everybody's following this. How long have we had the truck machine?
16 years.
And we're spending money on it right now, just trying to keep it moving?
Yeah.
Did we buy that, Mayor?
If you look at it over the 15-year life, it's under $10,000 a year of the current price.
Right, right. Sure.
And it's used how often? How much? Used it often. Oh, yeah, we use it every week, yeah.
Yeah, how many hours, same old way on?
$4,000.
That's a lot, yeah. How can we ensure that we get an adequate maintenance plan on pieces of equipment such as this? Do we have a schedule set up with all of our equipment to ensure that we have a way of tracking that?
Yes.
Staying on top of it, and we're not shot in the hide or anything like that?
Yeah. We have a record sheet on all our equipment, and if we make changes or service like that, it's recorded on there.
Council, any other questions? If there are no other questions, I make a motion to approve the purchase of the Dusan DL 220-5 wheel loader, general purpose and multi-purpose bucket, seven-year warranty in an amount not to exceed $143,210. Second. And we'll go to Jamie for the review.
Motion by Councilmember Campbell to approve the purchase of a Dusan DL 220-5 wheel loader with a general purpose and a multi-purpose bucket and seven-year warranty option for an amount not to exceed $143,210 from Central Power Systems and Services. An authorization for staff signatures or any necessary documents relating to the purchase, seconded by Councilmember Torres.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carries. That big wheel loader, same. Thanks, Matt. Next item on the agenda is consideration of wet equipment purchase. We're going to get this carefully up here in the podium.
Mayor, council, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak regarding the purchase of a golf course. Right now, we currently have a 2006 Toro sprayer that we purchased in Cherry Oaks Golf Course in Chene, Kansas, in 2017. The purchase price on this was $3,200. We purchased the sprayer to get by for a couple of years while we saved $9,000 in equipment fund. We get up to 15, while Cherry Oaks still owned the sprayer. The hour meter quit at $1,500. And this is gas. So we're already pretty high on the hour meter there. With them using it those, the next year and a half, and that's using it for the last four years, three and a half years, we put, on it right now, $2,703,000. So that's pretty high for that sprayer. Along with this, in the coming months, we will have to replace the boom, the pump, nozzle, light, controllers, all within the mission. So it is, we're spraying right now with 60%, what it can do. And that's just because of the age. And to find the new controller on it, you're going to be buying used as well because of the age of that piece of equipment. I've probably know the golf courses around, and people in the industry, John Deere sprayer, change drill guide, which is the one I'm going to be asking to purchase. This will come equipped with a hose reel, foam marker, speed, amperal control, and a rate controller. I also do the ball fields here in the city limits and pool area and sometimes parts. So that hose reel is going to come in, help us out quite a bit, with spraying bag worms under the equipment, around the equipment, warning track, infield, round concessions, bleachers, something like that. What's neat about this sprayer is it can also turn into a truckster, which is a vehicle with a bed on the back that can carry debris, limbs, sand around the course. So right now with our Toro, we can only spray two acres of hose with our current sprayer. With this sprayer, we can spray between 25, depending on what we're going to be spraying, fairways, teams, bridges. Right now, I spray fairways, I fill up seven nights. Takes 30 minutes each time I fill up. With this, we fill it up two and a half times. It still takes 30 minutes to fill up, but it's really narrowing that time. Right now, it takes two, three days to spray. This will only take one day to spray. So it's going to really free up some time. The sprayer, a sprayer is about the part of the golf course without it will have a better chance of disease pressure, plant demise and death. So it's really what keeps the golf course going. Just looking at what's I got, you can see the John Deere sprayer is not the cheapest one that we got. It is about 90% higher in cost. If you also look at that, we do have one for another company with a trade-in value of $18,400. John Deere will not take that as a trade-in. So what we're going to do is we're going to keep it right now, sit on it. It's still usable, we still use it, we're approaching when we need it. But it's something we're looking, we're going to be looking into. If you live in the lifespan of this sprayer, which is 16 years, this new sprayer will approximately cost us $100,000. And if you think about it, just for the golf course alone, I run $10,000 a year. You have the parts, you have the ball fields, that number can climb up to 13, 14 pounds. So if you look at it that way, it does pay for itself really quick. It's very vital. Right now, we're really concerned with how much the rate that we're putting out compared to what's supposed to be. We could either put less out or too much out because the control system. So I am familiar with this John Deere sprayer, because I had it in my previous employer. So I have ran one. We have funds in the golf course equipment reserve and the parts department will be tipping in on this as well, help us out. So I'm asking for you to purchase the John Deere ProGator and the John Deere Select Sprayer, and then I might have $14,000. Any questions?
Sam, just to be clear to the citizens, again, this has been planned for, the funds are there.
Yeah.
And also, the purchase of this will be split, as you stated, in the direct department also.
The other thing we pointed out is we've made significant investments in the ball dikes in the past years. We've made significant investments in the golf course, grasses over, in the past few years. To cut it short down on these equipment would be a little hard.
Yeah, we're going to be going into the ball dikes.
Can this be used to spray, like for Johnson grass on the die? Is that something that you would consider using towards a different application?
So that's where, again, that hose reel can come in. That's 200-foot hose reel. So we just have to get up on top of a die and then spray.
Take it out and spray it down. I know that's a concern from the county and from.
Yeah, I mean, we have adjacent fenders. That wouldn't be wrong. We wouldn't be able to boom spray, but we'd be able to.
This new one you're looking at, is it gas or diesel gas? Is it gas?
We got 16 years out of that Toro. Two golf courses, we got 16 years. I would expect to say, I mean, you're going to have hose break, you're going to have things that may come there. But, you know, the bigger courses are getting eight years out of them. Want to be bigger, they have 18 holes, 36 holes. We have nine. They have 10 acres and greens and broaches. We have two. So I'm expecting that at least 10-year on the sprayer part, and probably close to that on the ProGator part. Yeah, yeah. Free throw on that. And we did go through, we are not doing a diaphragm pump. We are going with a diaphragm pump. Just on that four, we're looking for $1,000.
Well, with that, Mr. Mayor, if there are more questions or discussion, I would make a motion to approve the purchase of a John Deere ProGator with John Deere HD200 Select Sprayer for an amount not to exceed $40,000.
Second. And we'll go to Jamie for the review.
Motion by Councilmember Torres to approve the purchase of a John Deere ProGator with a John Deere HD200 Select Sprayer for an amount not to exceed $40,000, seconded by Councilmember Clausen.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carries.
Thank you. I want to get around this a lot. Thought that went without saying.
We have a fifth item we've added under new business. It's consideration for some fire agents and light equipment. Are you presenting this, Ethan, or is Pat going to?
I'll present, and if you have any questions, I'll probably turn to Pat and something I can answer. You have the hand out there, it's front and back. This is basically to give us the supplies to fully install four hydrants. Public Works recently completed repairs on the hydrant there at Second College. And so we are out of fire hydrants on the shelves. We do have plans with the, you know, houses that have been built or continue to be built there along the Halsted Road. And 10th, putting fire hydrants now, because there are homes along Halsted Road. We plan to put two there, so that will be for sure two hydrants we need. And then there's a total of, I think, all the materials for four hydrants, and then there's some extenders and stuff. You guys might have noticed as they're painting that some hydrants are lower than others. And so to get some of those that are too low, raise it up to the proper level, there are some extenders and things included with this. Altogether, though, the purchase price exceeded the $10,000 for the four hydrants and the various supplies needed to install. We did contact another vendor that also carries these materials, and Solian Supply was the lower of the two quotes that we received. We're asking for an amount would be $16,500, and that's because, you can see, there's no shipping and handling. We do not anticipate there to be a lot after visiting with Solian Supply, but we might have a trip charge or two that we need to put on there. So we think $16,500 will more than cover that. But this will allow for the installation of those two new hydrants out there along Halsted Road, and then also give us spares to have back on the shelves for the occasional fire hydrants, so.
How many out there do we need to start looking at and potentially replace? Because if the one on Second Street felt like that, how many more do we have out there that's in that?
To be truthful, it's hard to say, but I would say every one of them out there is always potential. I think we are going to try to rebuild that one. That's one of our, we've never rebuilt one before, so we didn't want to take a chance of it in place.
Yeah.
Also didn't have a shut-off valve for us to be able to take it apart and rebuild. So we're going to try to rebuild the shop, but we may be able to reuse it somewhere else. But we do have a lot of old quarries. I heard that there's a lot of the Mr. King. Firehead, there's a lot of the, just two alleys versions. And pretty much every one of them needs to start building.
How many hydrants are there in city limits that we're responsible for?
I believe there's, it's close to a hundred. But I don't believe that.
And with that, how, what is, what would it cost to replace? Just an individual one?
Uh, the hydrants themselves were what about? Eighteen hundred, please?
Two thousand.
Two thousand, okay. So.
And then the missile limbs.
Right, it's. Like on that one, we had to add a valve. The valve is almost another eight hundred dollars probably. Then any pipe fitting to go with it, so pretty close to three thousand hydrant, I mean, hydrant.
It almost makes me wonder if, since we do have a lot of these older hydrants that probably have having been done to them for years. If we shouldn't start rebuilding them and replacing them maybe one a month or something or maybe more frequently.
Probably like a couple of years, that's what happened.
I mean, this is the first time they're trying to rebuild, so this will be an experiment.
Yeah, but I said the quarries we can't rebuild.
Yeah.
So they just have to go away, but.
But those we can start replacing too, I would think to.
No, I sure don't. Probably about half of them actually.
And those are just outdated?
Yeah, they're. Probably nineteen hundred bottles.
Probably can't even be a parts store.
No. Oh, you know, I don't, they're. Don't even think of making any.
We'll point out, I mean, we do, even though we have older hydrants, fire hydrants, public works staff both do testing.
Yeah.
And that's.
Test offer.
Every hydrant.
Service them every year.
Yeah. Yeah. We do make sure they're continuing, this one notice, and this will give us spares, I mean, there's some especially. Two hundred block of main that are slated for replacement.
Yeah. Actually, more than the tranks are.
And that's basically what happened with the hydrant on Second Street is they exercised it this year and it won't seal up after.
That's why I'm like, I'm interested to see what will all of that one. That's unusual for them.
Well, if there's no further discussion, I'll make a motion to purchase the fire hydrant and supplies from Solina. Supply Company for an amount not to exceed sixteen thousand five. Second. And we'll go to Jamie for the review.
Motion by Councilmember Wallace to purchase the fire hydrant and supplies from Solina Supply with an amount not to exceed sixteen thousand five hundred. With a second by Councilmember Campbell.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Motion carries, we're gonna get a few new fire hydrants. That finishes up our new business portion of our agenda. Moves us to the executive session portion. We do have two executive sessions this evening, I'll entertain the motion for the first one now.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that all the city council resesses to executive session for fifteen minutes. To discuss contract negotiations. Pursuant to consultation with attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in mutual client relationship, exception KSA seventy five. Dash forty three nineteen B two. To include governing body, city manager, city attorney. Open meeting to resume at seven fifty.
Second. And we will go to Jamie for the review.
Motion by Councilmember Campbell to move that the Holstead City Council recess into executive session for fifteen minutes to discuss contract negotiations. Pursuant to the consultation with an attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in the attorney client relationship, exception KSA seventy five forty three nineteen B two. And ask that in addition to the governing body, the following persons join the governing body in executive session. City manager and city attorney with the open meeting and governing body to reconvene in the city council chamber at seven fifty PM.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same side, we are moving into executive session. Also, we'll move back to the meeting.
Jamie again.
We are back from our executive session, is there any action to be taken as a result of? Seeing no movement from the council, we will move on to our next agenda item, which is the second. Executive session, you have a motion as.
I do, I make a motion that Holstead Council recess into executive session for twenty minutes. To discuss the city of Holstead employee and maintain privacy rights. Pursuant to personnel matters of non elected personnel, exception KSA seventy five dash forty three nineteen B one. To include governing body. City manager, city attorney. Open meeting to reconvene at eight ten.
Second. We'll go to Jamie now for the review.
Motion by Councilmember Campbell to move that the Holstead City Council recess into executive session for twenty minutes to discuss city of Holstead employee. And maintain privacy rights pursuant to the personnel matters of non elected personnel, exception KSA seventy five forty three nineteen B one. And ask that in addition to the governing body, the following persons join the governing body in executive session. The city manager and city attorney with the open meeting and governing body to reconvene in the city council chamber at eight ten PM, seconded by Councilmember Wallace.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All of those same side, we are moving into our second executive session. We are back from our executive session, is there any action to be taken as a result of? Seeing no movement from the council, we're going to move on to the report section of our agenda. And we'll start with the governing body first, and I'm gonna start with you tonight, Ed.
I have nothing, sir. George. Nothing really, but you know, I just love living in this town, I really do.
Mike? And Denise? I don't have much myself, other than I can tell you I did attend the Holstead fireworks and. Was very close to it and glad the wind was the right direction, I didn't suck up any shrapnel. So we will move on to the manager's report, not you, Ethan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. While significantly pared down this year, most all city departments supported the limited old settlers activities that did take place in some way, shape or form. I heard nothing but positive comments about the events that were held over the weekend, so just want to thank all the volunteers on the Old Settlers Committee for their hard work and making the weekend a fun and memorable one, even though it was scaled back. From a normal old settler celebration for the community and being conscientious about the public health concerns a larger event could have been. The pool will be staying open until August thirtieth this year as weather allows. The annual doggy swim will be, will conclude the year again, and that is scheduled for Sunday, August thirtieth. In the evening. This year has been anything but ordinary, but we do hope that families will continue to enjoy the facilities with the extended year. Also, March and rec volleyball sign up is currently taking place and then soccer has been postponed until spring this year, and that was a decision from the area rec leagues. Public Works staff have continued work in preparation for the AMI project, which begins this week. Staff have also been continuing to paint fire hydrants, repainting the crosswalk on Chestnut Seven, maintenance and mowing of the levee. Helping Wedgwood with the installation of a new sign on the clubhouse, assisting Harvey County Elections with voting booth setup. And have completed repairs to the faulty fire hydrant at Second and College. There's a little bit of dirt work that needs done there, but the fire hydrant itself is in working order. Again, Public Works also completed work on the stormwater main between Poplar and Locust along Third Street. Probably saw the alley shut down there. The alley will remain closed for the time being to allow that initial fill to settle a little bit, but it's anticipated that the alley should be reopened by the end of this week at the latest. Finance and administration are currently accepting applications for an administrative position due to the departure of Deputy Corcoran. Initial review of applications will be this week and interviews will start following week. Corcoran staff have also been busy with preparing for the conversion to the AMI system, normal utility VMS billing and fiscal in a month. Additionally, finalization of the twenty twenty one budget presentation book is underway for submission to GFOA. For consideration for the distinguished budget, budget presentation award, now that we have a budget. Beginning with the Harvey County Care Relief Fund Task Force these past few weeks, I am pleased to report that the task force came up with some final recommendations that will be reviewed by the county commission this week regarding the plan for Harvey County. Holstead has tentatively been approved for eight thousand two hundred fifty nine dollars and eighty eight cents in reimbursement. Which was approximately eighty two percent of what we submitted for reimbursement. And then we were approved, again, tentatively, two hundred and thirty six thousand, six hundred forty six dollars and eighty cents in direct aid transfer. Which is also approximately eighty two percent of what we submitted. Those numbers are not final until the plan is both approved by the county commission and the state of Kansas, but we are hopeful that it will be. Reimbursements help cover expenses already incurred. Due to the COVID nineteen pandemic, while the direct aid funds will allow us to better prepare our emergency services departments. For the continuation of the pandemic and strengthen our ability to operate remotely as an entity, including conducting city meetings. Such as these remotely if another shutdown were to occur. There's still some work to be done with the CARES task force, but I just want to thank Harvey County for setting up a process for these funds that involve multiple stakeholders and opinions. The timeline was very short, but I think all of Harvey County is gonna benefit from the work that was done and the priorities that were identified in that plan. And now the budget and cares have been mostly completed, we will begin moving forward with some of our other projects that we had received grant funding for. Such as Safe Routes to Schools and the Storm Sirens. As we officially receive notification of both those projects that we can proceed to the next step. And that is all I have unless there are any.
Hearing none from the council, we'll move on to our last item, and that's financial report. Keep your job support there, no equal.
Sure do. City has completed soft closing accounts in July, which is about sixty percent of our fiscal year. Revenues across all funds continue to be at or exceed expectations. In the general fund, our larger revenue streams such as property and sales tax continue to hold steady. With no indication as of yet that we will not meet our projections for the year. Some of our more elastic revenue streams such as various fees and ambulance fee collection are doing better than anticipated. And I'm happy to report that Wedgwood Golf Course has taken in more revenue at this point in twenty twenty than it did for all of twenty nineteen, currently up over ten percent. Utility fund revenue has also remained in very good position, with all funds sitting higher than projections and expense to revenue ratios at a healthy level. Expenditures across all our funds continue to be at or below expected levels, the general fund's running about five percent below the expected expense level for this time of year. And utility funds also show decreased expenditure activity as we continue to evaluate expenditures in response to the pandemic. And its potential financial effect on our budget. The gas fund is potentially lower than expectations, which is due to the warmer winter we had, which resulted in lower demand and lower natural gas prices. Staff continue to hold up on budgeted transfers from the general fund for the time being. And will reevaluate those at the end of the third quarter and then at the end of the year respectively. Currently fifty percent or more of all of our transfers have taken place as budgeted, but we continue to be conservative in the remaining transfers. Till we get a better indication that the steadiness we're seeing is is here to stay, and we're not gonna see any sort of revenue. Drop. In the general fund, budgeted transfers from the utility fund continue to take place as budgeted, as those revenues do remain steady enough to facilitate those transfers. Those transfers would include. Moving money to the utility reserves, which will help fund a portion of the AMI project. Balances remain very healthy in both the equipment fund and capital improvement fund, as you can see from your summary page there that was desk. We do expect to see a decline for the following month in the equipment fund with the approved purchases from this evening. And then the AMI project, and so it will be in pain those expenses. But total equipment fund balance should remain well over five hundred thousand dollar mark. And the capital improvement fund should continue to hold steady or see a slight increase from budgeted transfers from the utility funds, and again, that balance should remain over five hundred thousand dollar mark. You will notice some departments are behind in equipment balances. These amounts were to be offset by equipment transfers that are currently not taking place. We do anticipate that those departments will make up this difference by the end of the fiscal year. And I just want to stress that at no point does that mean the equipment fund is ever negative. While overall across the budgeted funds, the city does have less cash on hand, as is shown by that budgeted fund summary. Than we did in July of two thousand and nineteen. It is important to remember that the spin down of available cash was anticipated. The majority of difference in our cash balances is due to lower carryover amounts from two thousand nineteen into two thousand twenty, as compared to what we carried over from two thousand eighteen into two thousand nineteen. I will note that the recreation fund does currently show a negative balance and will continue to do so until the rec commission settles the costs of pool payroll. And operations, which will be by the end of the third quarter. And the city of Holstead overall continues to be on firm footing financially and we hope. That we will continue to be pleasantly surprised by positive trends like sales tax revenues holding steady and lower than expected expenditures. That is all I have for the financial report.
Any questions for Ethan regarding that financial report? Seeing nothing from the council, that does conclude our agenda this evening, and I would entertain a motion for adjournment. Second. Would you like to review that fourth team?
Motion by Councilmember Claussen to adjourn the city council meeting at eight twenty, seconded by Councilmember Torres.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Motion carries and we are adjourned, thank you, Council, thank you, Holstead.